We've had, we've had big ones. I got six o'clock, Allison. We've had big ones, Becky.
Yeah, so I'm gonna call to order this meeting of the Select Board for Monday, November 25th. We will be in workshop type setting for the first hour and then we will proceed through our regular style agenda.
So, if I may, so what I did in an effort to make this as productive as possible for the Select Board, Town Counsel is here to respond to questions that the Board may have, but what I did is I prepared a document for you going over the remaining policies that had to, for the Board to go over. And I hope this helped you understand where we are and I've given you copies of all the policies. So what I would like to do, if it's okay with the Board, is go through these one at a time and take them up and cross them off our list. So the first is the alcohol and drug policy. You guys had asked Town Counsel for an edited policy, which he did. He put it in the final form. However, the Select Board had some questions that you wanted to review with Town Counsel. So I gave Peter the latest draft of the policy and I've given it to you as well. So if you want to start on that one, you go to your packet. It starts on page six.
Yep. Alright, so who has questions on the alcohol and drug policy?
I see. One of the questions we had originally was why some of those terms on the first page were in blue, but they don't seem to be anymore, so.
I cleaned that up because you guys had asked that.
That's fine. Yeah. I have no questions on this.
Okay. I had a couple of questions.
I understood one of the questions. I think a member Geiger was asking questions about why this only applies to, the testing only applies to commercial drivers. That's right out of the Federal Transportation Act. I have seen policies that apply to other employees who don't drive commercial vehicles. The federal regulations require that commercial drivers, that the town test at least 10% and 25%, I think your policy actually talks about 25 and 50% of the workforce, at least 25% of the safety sensitive drivers in the testing consortium and a number of random tests, this is on page five, the number of random drug tests conducted must be equal to at least 50% of all safety sensitive drivers in the town's testing.
The main reason that we don't do drug testing of other employees is, all of our employees are union employees. The highway workers have no choice because of the federal statute. If we want to drug test, police, fire, we would have to bargain that, do collective bargaining, and I can promise you, it'll be a very difficult negotiation. Do you agree with me on that, John?
Yeah, that's our goals.
Yeah. So I'm comfortable with the policy as presented.
So the way this is written, I understand the testing piece of it, does this policy still apply to personal vehicles and all the, you know, outcomes and things if someone isn't tested but is found to be under the influence exactly?
We have department heads who have a pickup truck that the town owns. Do they fall into this?
Tom Delaney absolutely falls into this and he gets tested all the time.
What about the water department?
They do not.
Not the testing. I mean, if they're in an accident and somebody smells alcohol on their breath or they come to work and they're clearly exhibiting signs of being under the influence of something, you certainly, you probably couldn't test them, but you could discipline them based on observations.
So should the policy of this possibly be alcohol and drug policy for vehicle operators, town vehicle operators?
Again, you would need to negotiate that with the unions.
Policy is broader than that. It's, there's a federal statute called the Drug-Free Workplace Act that requires that you publish a notice that you're gonna make sure here there's no drugs in your workplace. So this, there's language in here that says all employees are forbidden from possessing alcohol or drugs or using alcohol or drugs in the workplace.
So it, yes, I understand now why I saw some things in that. That's fine.
Okay.
So in section eight?
What page are?
Page eight of the, about eight into nine. It talks a little bit about the consequences of positive tests and it's still in there, references a positive test for THC. Is that something?
Yes. Federal law still bans marijuana. Absolutely. Correct.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, a couple of points about that. Federal law requires if they test positive, they'd be taken off of driving until they go through a process of being certified that they're drug free or alcohol free.
Okay.
You have a policy, I believe it's two strikes and you're, you lose your job.
Correct.
Or for alcohol.
Yep.
And three strikes and you use your drug. Oh, okay.
Yeah, both. We suspended employees up to, we had one out of 60 days.
Yep.
For, it was a second infraction.
Right.
One more time, he gets fired.
I mean, you asked me about treating marijuana the same as, you know, well, you asked me about reviewing whether marijuana should be included in this policy. Federal Department of Transportation has put out a clear guideline that no, just because the state has legalized marijuana, we're not gonna change any of our regs or policy. You still have to, but the actual penalties are up to you. So you could theoretically have a different penalty for marijuana than for cocaine or other kinds of drugs. But that's, that's just a point I'd make. The other thing is, there is still a question out there about medical marijuana, could be a disability. There's a case where the person applied for a job, told the interviewer that she used medical marijuana for, off, off work at, at home for certain conditions, then tested positive under the protocol for that company. They fired her. Went up to the SJC, they found that it could be a disability because the person was using, it could be a reasonable accommodation to allow the person to use medical marijuana off duty. That hasn't been resolved yet, but it's just something to keep in mind. You know, I think in that case, if a person told you ahead of time that they were using medical marijuana to help them sleep at night or for some other condition off, off site, there may be a little different treatment in that circumstance because marijuana stays in your, in your system. You know, you, you can test positive a week after you've used it on the weekend. So that's still just, the lawyers don't know how that's shaking out yet, but that's certainly, there's a lot of questions under this legalization of marijuana stuff, so.
So are there any other questions on that one or are we, Mark, do you want us to make one motion at a time and just check this off?
One at a time. Yes, I would.
There's more questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I'm a CDL driver and I understand what the guidelines are and the expectations of the federal government for me to have my license and whatnot. With this policy, if we're to adopt it, is there anything in this policy that exceeds the federal guidelines that has yet to be bargained with the unit?
No.
That's my question. So there's no changes on that?
No.
Yeah, the only thing I saw that was different than the federal regulations was the number of drivers that you're testing, the percentage of drivers that you're testing. I think the federal regulations require, there's two different categories.
I think we're more, we're more strict than this.
Right, you are. Yeah, right.
Fifty percent is higher than what the federal guidelines.
And I want to leave it that way.
You're more, yeah.
And that's in the contract.
Don't have to. Past practice. We've always done it. Let's not change it.
As long as, I just want to make sure we don't have something that they can brief.
Yep. No, past practice. It's, it's in place.
Did they sign this policy also? Do they sign this one?
When they get, when they get hired.
Yeah.
And how is the town supposed to deal with somebody who has a positive drug test for marijuana where they may have used it on the weekend, but then when they get tested?
Federal statute, they're not allowed to use marijuana at all, ever.
Right. Again, it might be a question. If they claim that they're, they have some disability and that's the reason they were using it, we'd have to consider that.
Okay, fine.
Any other questions?
So I'd ask the Board to prove this policy is presented?
So much.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next policy is the parental leave. Oh, sorry?
There was not unanimous on taking it?
No.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Yeah.
Okay. So four to one. John, did you get that? Second policy is the parental leave. You had asked Town Counsel to give you a definition of foster child and where to put it. Town Counsel has, I wish there was an easier way for me to do this and I apologize if there isn't. Town Counsel has provided that definition and I inserted it where Town Counsel recommended that it be inserted, which was right here. This section right here starting with employees all the way down to custody. So that deals with the foster child and I don't think there were any other questions other than that. So if there aren't any, I'd ask the.
Hold on. I need to correct.
Oh, did I make a mistake?
I'm sorry. No, I did.
Oh.
I need to correct an inaccuracy here. I got a question about whether the parental leave policy, which used to be called the Massachusetts Maternity Leave Act in your old policy, the state amended the statute to make it not just maternity leave but parental leave, which, so that's correct. I got a question whether it required, the state law required the town to grant leave for foster child, welcoming a new foster child under the age of 18, which is number two there. I said yes and gave you this definition. That was not correct. That's under the Federal Family and Medical Leave Act, which, that was the policy I was looking back at when you asked me that question. That's another policy. FMLA does require granting 12 weeks of leave for a foster child. So your old policy for some reason had that language in there, the same as the Federal Family and Medical Leave Act. The actual statute only talks about adoption. It does have that language about adopting a child under the age of 23 if they're physically or mentally disabled. So three is correct.
So should we remove two?
But two should just be adoption of a child under the age of 18.
That's.
And then three extends the age of 23 if the child's physically or mentally disabled. That's out of the Massachusetts parental leave statute, but you need to take out welcoming a new foster child under two.
Well, but this policy is talking about both parental leave and FMLA because.
Well, you have a separate FMLA policy. I, I.
But you, you've already approved that.
Well, you're right. Well, I'm not sure. No, it says it runs concurrently with FMLA. What the state law does is it, it grants eight weeks as opposed to the federal law, which is 12 weeks. The state law, you only have to be employed for three months to be eligible for the eight weeks. Under the federal law, you gotta be employed for a year to get the 12 weeks. So, you know, it goes back and forth. It's, it's difficult to reconcile the two, but it's my understanding that this particular policy deals with the Massachusetts law. You have a separate family and medical leave policy that deals with the federal law.
So, but right underneath that first line says employees may take FMLA.
Well, that's because I put that language in there, which is out of the federal regulations and that was my mistake. That should not be in the Massachusetts policy.
So we should, so what you're saying, Peter?
Let's, maybe this needs to just get revised.
So I, I'll bring it back to another meeting, but I just want to make sure I understand. Number two should just say adoption of a child under the age of 18, period.
Right.
Then take out that whole definition.
And you could put that in the FMLA policy if you feel it's appropriate.
So do we need to have, I mean, obviously we're bound by FMLA.
Right.
Then we're bound by Massachusetts Parental Leave Act.
Right.
Do we need to have a policy such as this that kind of reiterates them in various flavors?
You know, there are differences. The, the eight weeks you get under Massachusetts law can count toward the 12 weeks that you're eligible for under the FMLA. So you can count that, eight weeks. If it doesn't tack on, you'll get eight and 12. Under the state law, you're eligible for the eight weeks if, for some reason, you got, you used your 12 weeks up. I think you would be eligible for the eight weeks if you then, say, adopted a child within, you know, the same year. So there are differences. Again, one, one only requires you be employed for three months. The state one, the federal one requires you be employed for a year before you're eligible for the 12 weeks. There are other reasons why you can get FMLA under the federal law for, the state law really just deals with birth or adoption of children. The federal law deals with serious medical conditions of yourself or family members. So there are other reasons under the federal law. So to me, it probably makes sense to have two separate policies.
Okay, so I know Becky said something about bringing it back, but if I just amend the policy by taking out welcoming of a foster child and removing that definition, I think this policy's in the final form, if the Board wants to adopt it. Or do you want me to get it back?
Where is the definition of, in the middle of the sentence, foster care means?
I'm taking that whole paragraph out, Becky.
It says employees may take FMLA leave under number four.
Uh huh. Yep. But that is an important piece of information that you can take some of the FMLA leave before the actual placement or adoption of a child. That needs to stay there.
Well, that should be in the FMLA policy. I mean, if you're looking at, you know, the FMLA policy has exactly the same language as this.
Okay. Okay.
Traternity leave policy. So if you want to use.
I'm gonna take out that whole paragraph.
If you want to use that language, you should put it in the FMLA policy.
And, I'm sorry to be dumb here. We have a separate FMLA policy?
You approved it already.
We already approved it. It's HR 2019 number five.
Correct.
Okay.
So, Allison, I think you can approve this with those two amendments if you want.
So I still have a question. Under section seven, it talks about that the employee has the right to take this either as paid time or unpaid time. If they take it as paid time, they have to have used up all of their sick time.
Correct.
And if they take it as unpaid time, then they have to pay the town for their share of the monthly premium.
Correct.
Is that our local decision? Is that the state level decision? Is that?
I think that's, I think that's a state level decision because if you, if you want to take health insurance and you can't get it taken out of your paycheck, you have to pay the town. So for example, when I sus, just for an example, when I suspended the employee for 90 days for the marijuana usage, he had to pay the town for his health insurance during those 90 days. His share, not the town's share. His share. Because we couldn't deduct it out of the policy, we couldn't deduct it out of his paycheck.
I thought we had this discussion back in 2010 or 2011 when Fran, Peter, Anna, previous Board was there. And I thought it was a Board decision that we went back and forth on whose responsibility it was to pay the premium in that situation.
We've been enforcing it that they have to pay, so if it was a Board decision, I don't remember.
That's what we did. That was my recollection. I could be wrong.
I think that's the right decision.
But so, Allison's question is, does the state require that or is that our policy?
Well, only in the sense that if it's the state's policy, we don't have any right to change it, so we don't need to talk about it.
Right.
If it's our decision, to me, I'm uncomfortable with this because if a person wants to take paid time off, they have to have effectively used up all of their sick time, which to me, to me almost says that no one can use this. I mean, effectively, if you have to use, if your choices are either to pay out of pocket for your health care or use up all your sick time and then you can get to this, both of those choices kind of stink.
Do you know if that's state policy?
It certainly is under the FMLA. You have to continue the employee's health insurance and pay the portion that you were paying before the employee took leave under the federal law. The language in the state law.
Parental Leave Act, what does that say? That's what I'm curious about.
It doesn't say it specifically. The parental leave shall not affect the employee's right to receive vacation time, sick leave, bonuses, advancement, seniority. It doesn't say anything about benefits, plans, or programs for which the employee was eligible at the date of the leave. So it seems to say that you have to continue the health insurance.
We have to continue the health insurance, but it's the portion.
I remember having this discussion and I think that the Board at the time decided that the employee needs to pay it.
Right. Well, I agree with that.
So a person who's looking at this either has to come up with thousands of dollars potentially out of pocket or burn through all of their sick time.
No, they have to, they have to use, they can, they can choose to use their sick time. If they use their sick time, if they use their sick time, then we'll just deduct the health insurance out of it. If they choose not to use their sick time and they go unpaid, they have to pay the $143 a pay period that they owe the town for their 30% share. It's not thousands of dollars. It depends on how long they're out.
It's their share.
It's their share, not the town's share. We can still continue to pay.
I understand that.
Okay.
Well, I have a different question and I've asked this before. Why don't we let them use their vacation time?
They can use all their time.
Well, but it says here they have to use all their sick time before they can use their vacation time.
That's how it works because they're all, they're all on sick, it's sick.
Burning the sick time, then you go into the vacation time. When you run out of vacation time, it's unpaid time.
Correct.
But why can't you use your vacation time first?
You can use vacation time for anything.
So, because, let me ask a different question. We allow them to accumulate unused vacation time?
To a certain level.
To a certain level. Can they accumulate unused sick time?
Sick time is unlimited.
That's sick time when you get to the end of the year. If you haven't used your sick days, you're losing them.
No, that, no, 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 no.
You accumulate it personally.
Personal, Josh, personal days. Sick time is unlimited.
So Mark, if, and I don't know how many days you have sick time, but if you wanted to enact this, you have to burn through 100 sick days or whatever.
Correct.
But when you leave, do you get paid for all the sick days?
You do not get paid for your unused sick time.
Nothing.
Nothing. Not a dime.
So that's an important.
That's why you would use your sick time.
Before your vacation. Correct.
I see. Okay.
It makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, that's typical of policies. Neither the federal law nor the state law requires that they be paid at all. So by allowing them to use time, they can get paid. But if they're unpaid, they have to pay their portion of the, of the health benefit. So, yeah.
I'm okay with this, with the changes, taking out the foster care and that of the paragraph.
Okay. If the Board wants to do that, if you want to vote it.
I am speaking for one.
That's my recommendation.
Can someone make a motion?
Yeah, I'll give it a shot. No, seriously. I just lost the page.
It's, uh, 21 or thereabouts.
Page 20 through 24.
Beginning.
Twenty-one is the page with the act.
So I move that we approve the Massachusetts Parental Leave Act Select Board Policy of November 25th, 2019, removing under number four, two, adoption of a child or welcoming of a new foster child.
No, you want to remove the words or welcoming a new foster child. You want to leave it to read adoption of a child under the age of 18.
So leaving number two up to adoption of a child, removing thereafter the remainder of the sentence and removing the next paragraph, beginning with employees.
No.
Oh, Josh.
No, no. What I want you to do in the number two is have the sentence revised to read adoption of a child under the age of 18, colon, or.
That's correct.
Somebody else try the motion.
Okay.
I move we approve the policy with the changes as recommended by the town manager, removing the words wel, or welcoming a new foster child under section four, two.
Yep.
And removing the entire paragraph that starts employees may take FMLA leave up to child from parental custody.
That's exactly correct.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm opposed.
Four to one. Okay, loss control policy. After reviewing the comments around insurance company and discussing with our human resources director, I'm recommending that you adopt this policy as presented. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next policy, access to Town Counsel policy, Select Board member Pine had an issue with the policy relative to issues involving the town manager. So I added a clause six to the policy that reads, "Issues involving the town manager shall be handled by the Chair of the Select Board." I think that addresses your concern, Becky. I'd ask the Board to adopt this policy as presented.
Not totally.
No.
Well, I still think that, so number three says, "All correspondence with Town Counsel should be copied to the town manager," but I'm assuming that number six.
Which circumspect that.
Issues involving the town manager shall be handled by the Chair of the Select Board. I think we should add something that clarifies and the town manager will not be copied on correspondence with the Town Counsel if this is the case or something like that.
Shall be handled by the Chair of the Select Board with information shared as appropriate?
That would be fine.
Okay. So add the words with information shared as appropriate to number six. I'd ask the Board to adopt that policy as presented.
So moved. Sorry, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Has anyone not voted aye?
Was that unanimous?
I believe it was.
Okay, this next one, Town Manager Review Policy. That, what town is that, Josh? Wayland?
That's Wayland and it's been.
The Wayland case is a, is a nightmare. So there's been a lot of issues on how to deal with the summary of the town manager's review. Town Counsel had reviewed the policy, updated it in response to the Bowler case, which is the Wayland case, and had the Human Resources Director doing the compilation. I think that's a mistake. So my recommendation and the way I rewrote the policy, everything in here is as Town Counsel drafted it or amended it, with the one exception where I'm saying that if you look at number, clause number, six.
Six.
The summary evaluation.
Six under the review procedures?
Well, on page one. I'm sorry, let me get it up on the screen. I apologize.
I'm on page two.
It's not on page one. It's on page two.
Bottom.
No, it's number six.
On page one, number six.
Six, page one.
I believe that's what it is.
And number four makes a reference. Oh, there's no five.
Did I miss a number?
But I have a suggestion to add a five in there, so you can leave it for the town board.
Six becomes five and seven becomes six.
Yeah, but I'm gonna recommend in addition.
I have one question.
Yep.
Yeah.
While I'm flying the policy.
I'm not sure why we're specifying, specifying Labor Counsel instead of Town Counsel.
Well, because I figured Labor Counsel handles employee issue, employee labor matters, so I figured that would be the person to do it. That was my recommendation.
But if you go to our Town Counsel today, if we just had it all in one place and it happened to be with Brooks and Durentis, who would be the Labor Counsel? How would you figure out who the Labor Counsel is?
Whoever, Peter handles labor's items for Town Counsel. He's the labor, he's the labor lawyer for Brooks and Durentis. So he would be Labor Counsel for the town. So under that, under that definition, it would be Peter. If we only had one attorney, he wouldn't have to change the policy. Okay. So, so what I changed here is number six, which is, should be number five, but Becky says she has the number six, five. The summary evaluation shall presented to the full Board by Labor Counsel at a public meeting for discussion and approval. So I took that out of the Human Resources Director and gave it to, to Town Counsel to do the summary evaluation. And then I also amended section six on page two. So that's my recommendation.
But Labor Counsel, not Town Counsel.
Correct.
The, the important point that came out of the case was that somebody other than a Select Board member should receive the summary evaluation. The AG's guidance suggests another person in Town Hall possibly. I did mention in my comments that I know of towns that have somebody from Town Counsel's office review them and present, and, and put the summaries together. That's an extra check. I think that would, is intended to try to avoid any possible violations of the open meeting law. So Marcus has accepted that, that proposal. The only comment I, I have is on page one in number five, says the summary evaluation shall be sent, presented to the full Board by Labor Counsel at a public meeting for discussion and approval. You know, later on, it says that the Chair shall, you know, I, I, my only point is that it doesn't require Town Counsel to actually come to the meeting and.
No, I agree.
Yeah, right. It's the Chair. That Town Counsel gives it to the Chair and it gets put on an agenda and included in the packet there. Right?
Yep, that's how.
This is the summary evaluation.
Theoretically, I agree with what you just said. However, insomuch as Labor Counsel, Town Counsel, whomever Counsel will be preparing a summary evaluation, the comments that a chair picked from each individual Board Member's evaluation are done subjectively by whichever Counsel does it. In an absence of the Counsel being present. In an absence of the council being present at the meeting where it's presented to the public, then there's no ability to ask any questions of council. If you follow what I'm saying.
Okay, if you look at paragraph eight on page three, the town manager, after the summary is put together, then completes section three, and it says that within twenty-one days following that completion of section three, the chair shall present the summary evaluation to the full board for discussion and approval. Any amendments are done, my majority vote. I mean, I, I think it could be up to the board to decide whether they felt it was appropriate for the person who put together the summary to come to the meetings or not. I didn't see this policy as requiring that, that's all. That's my only point.
So, one of the questions I have as we go through this is, I think we're using compiled to mean that council or whomever would get, everyone's evaluation would kind of pick and choose pieces of it to, to create some sort of comprehensive document. Do our options change if we use compiled in the sense of just taking everything everybody said, combining it into one document, and then coming to a meeting where the board is deciding which comments to include or not?
That's how you'd have to do it.
So, that's everything, then?
Well, that's what I'm wonder, I mean, I, I, and then the board hears it all and decides what goes forward. I don't...
Good luck.
I'm struggling with the idea that anyone other than the board would be somehow compiling things.
Right. So, if I may, one of the suggestions I was going to make is to state that the summary shall include...
Where are you? I'm sorry.
This is my own writing.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna say, conveniently, it could go where the number five isn't on the first page, but could go someplace else. The summary shall include, at a minimum, a matrix showing with identification the votes and rankings of each member of the select board. There has been, just for your benefit, Peter, variability over the past few years about how this was done. So, our evaluation tool includes a number of places where we check off when certain qualities meet, exceeds, or doesn't meet, or something like that. Um, and some years, the summary has shown all of the votes and who voted which way on those things. This past year, that did not happen, as you can see later in our presentation. I think that it should always include that. I think the public deserves to see that, and I think we deserve to see it of each others. So, we know how, how people voted. So, that was one of my suggestions, that we state that that will happen every year.
So, Peter, what, how do other, I mean, what would you?
Well, in our town, we have, we have town council put together the summary evaluation. I don't think we, town council takes every single comment and puts it in there.
But, but back to what sort of an evaluation tool you use, does it have grids and checkmarks?
Yeah, pretty much. I think those are fairly standard. You know, I think the AG's, um, advisory does say, where an administrative assistant or executive secretary is not available for such purpose compiling the summary, an individual member, the chair, may receive and compile the evaluations. I mean, you're talking about two different things. One is who puts them together, and the second is who receives.
How comprehensive is whatever that gets put together?
What did they include?
That's the key question that I have at the moment. When we say the labor council will compile it, is the labor council going to make any judgments? Or is, is he or she simply going to compile everybody's information so that it's displayed all in one place?
I think that'd be a directive that you would give, either in the policy itself, or when, when you communicate with council about how to put this thing together.
The answer to that, I think, is critical.
Well, it is, but, 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 think about something. I'm sorry, Joshua, this is kind of important on, on John's point, if you don't mind. The charter says, a summary of which is available to the public. A summary does not mean every single comment by every single member of the board. One chair of the board thought that was the way he wanted to do his summary, so he put every single comment from every single member. The chair last year said, I'm going to take a majority of the comments and, and do a summary of it. So, it, it seems to me that if you have one board member that's an outlier, and no other member mentions that particular comment, maybe it doesn't belong in the summary evaluation, because a summary is just that, a summary of, of the evaluation. Just my two cents.
Could you say, and I hear what you're saying, Mark, I actually agree with you. Could you say that the summary evaluation will be compiled by town council, labor council, whomever we decide on in consultation with the chair?
I don't know if that violates the open meeting law.
Does that violate the open meeting law if you communicate with the chair?
Well, the chair can't communicate with other board members in that process, but that, I don't think says, I don't believe that says they couldn't work with town council.
I'm just trying to find.
Well, I mean, I think the caution from the case is that the board member should not receive the summaries, that's what the case is.
Correct. That's what the whole case is about.
And there is a distinction between the summary itself and the individual evaluations. To the extent there's stuff in the individual evaluations that doesn't get into the summary, the individual evaluations are not public records, and, and this policy makes that clear, and that's consistent with the open meeting law. But that's what happened in the case, was the chair got the summaries, or got the individual evaluations, put a summary together, and then put out to other members, not only the summary, but some of the individual evaluations. And so, the individual evaluations were found to be public records in that case. So, that's what, the advice is that no board member should get individual evaluation. That's what the.
Even the chair.
I'm sorry?
Even the chair.
Right. There is some leeway. I mean, the AG says, if, if nobody else is available for such purpose, an individual member may receive and compile the evaluations. In either event, once compiled, the aggregated evaluation may not be circulated prior to a meeting, so you can't obviously send out the document before, you know, you post a meeting and include it in a package, but it... The, the best practice is for a board member not to receive the individual evaluation.
There's two different things that we're talking about. I am talking about the places where we put checkmarks or numbers. And that's not comments. Those checkmarks are numbers. I think we should show how we all voted on that. And then it does show if one person is an outlier, it's very clear. They're identified, the votes are identified, the public knows, everybody on the board knows. I, I think the comments, you know, are in a different category, and they do need to be somewhat consolidated. But I think that those checkmarks and, and numbers should be shown and identified. And for instance...
If you do an aggregate of the five members of this board
Yeah.
and the scores, and I looked at it when it was sent out for the purposes of our discussion again today. I looked at it again, and to be honest with you, I hear what you're saying, Becky, but it's abundantly clear to me when the town manager doesn't get a score, that's perfect.
Yeah, but it's...
I think part of the difficulty, though, becomes...
Can I, Josh, finish?
If, if you just look at the numbers, you can't tell as a member of the public whether it was two ones, two fives, and a three, or five threes.
I get that, so you can say what the scores are, but I don't think you should necessarily identify which board member gave that score. I, I'd be fine if you identified the one.
So, you just put the Xs?
Yes, I'd be fine if that was identified, but I don't think you should call it, call it out.
Why not?
Why not?
Because, to see, the problem is, if there is, for instance, one outlier, and all you have done is show the Xs, you don't know. Is it a whole lot of different people who are consist, you know, who are giving bad Xs? Or is it one person? I think that makes a difference. Also, I, I, I'm sorry if I've interrupted you before, but the place, the, the summary, the final overall number thing, where what was reported was select board majority, no one, not us, not the public, knows, okay, is it a unanimous majority? Well, probably if it was unanimous, they would say so. Okay, they don't know if it's a four-to-one majority or a three-to-two majority, and they don't know, say it's a three-to-two majority, the ones that aren't part of the majority, were they higher or lower? And I think that that does make a difference. And I think it, it can be used to make the evaluation look either better or worse than actually the real numbers would show.
I think we should make the AG put together the compilation.
I, I don't see the advantage of displaying every individual member of the board's vote on every single item in the report. I just don't see any, I'm not sure it's fair. I'm not sure it does anything for public relations. And I, and I don't really understand why we would do it. I've heard, I've heard what you've said, Becky, but I don't understand.
Well, it's often said that if you don't like, you know, the way the select board is acting, you should vote, vote them out. If you don't know how they voted, if you don't know how they voted on this, on these important things, how are you gonna know whether you want to vote them out or in?
Well, there's a lot of other things for them to look at besides this one document in making that judgment.
I guess I would take the approach, why are we wanting to, people to not know how we vote?
Because it is a consolidation.
Right. Well, the consolidation shows, okay?
And the individual reports that you fill out and turn in, and I fill out and turn in, are not public documents.
And the comments, I'm not talking about the comments.
Understood. John makes a very valid point right there. We are not supposed to release the individual evaluations. They're supposed to be kept in as personnel policy, and a compilation is supposed to be done. If we called out the individual votes on exceeds expectations, meets expectations, needs improvement, or, or the, what's the other one?
Does not.
Does not mean, okay, that now you are revealing a portion of the evaluation, and that could be construed, getting back to the Wayland case. Is, is that a fair statement?
Yep.
I don't think that's remotely true, and it was done some years in the past in this town.
Every, every, you're talking about every comment being.
Not every comment. I am talking about every checkmark and every, and the, the final overall numerical rating, it was identified how each individual voted on those things. The comments were, were, were gathered.
Okay.
But the individual votes were shown.
Yeah, I'm not sure, again, you're talking about the policy, you're talking more about the evaluation instrument itself, I think.
Well, but the summary, then, that was presented to the public, allowed the public to know how each individual person voted, and how each individual member rated and ranked, you know, saw which strength, what they saw as strengths in the town manager, what they saw as needing improvement.
And I'm saying, I'm saying whether it's a checkmark, or a number, or a comment, it's not public information.
If it has the name of the individual select board member next to it.
Mm-hmm. And so, if it doesn't have the name of the select board member, now tell me what the value is of putting it out there.
It shows if there's outliers. I would have no problem putting those, not an aggregate score, but putting the checkmarks out, but without putting a name against it.
Well, I think that's an improvement over what was done this year, for sure. I, I think it's better with identification, and particularly on the overall numbers, the overall final rating.
I don't, so personally, I don't see where we could have names in this, other than perhaps at the end of vote of, you know, approved three-to-two with who voted how, kind of thing. You know, to me, I'm struggling, my, my quandary is more around the comments and less around the checkmarks and the numbers, because I, I, I'm concerned that if potentially, like, last evaluation round, there are comments that people feel should have been included, but nobody but council has seen those,
Right.
then, you know, we're all looking at some sort of generic compilation, and I'm arguing, oh, but it needs to say this, but nobody's seen, I mean, I, I just don't know how the logistics work of...
I didn't, yeah, I mean, I had the same problem this year when the chair did it. I thought, you know, I had comments that were not included, and...
Every year, that's gonna happen, though. I don't care if the chair puts this together, if the HR director, which I don't think the HR director should do it, because it puts that individual in a very difficult position.
I agree.
Right.
I think we should give town council, labor council, whomever it is, a shot at this for one year. And I think the point that you bring up in terms of when you deliver it, that town council, excuse me, that town manager gets to comment back on this, and that once it gets to the full board and is distributed at a public meeting, at that juncture, if there's something that a board member feels extremely strongly about that should be included in the comments, that, that we're not, that they should have that opportunity to discuss that with town council thereafter before the board votes on acceptance. Is that a way of dealing with that? This is just extremely cumbersome and ugly, and we're not trying to be clumsy with this and foolish with this, but we have spent more time on this policy, let alone trying to compile the evaluations, and it's a moving target every year. It's very difficult.
Yeah, well, it's been, it's been a problem. I mean, Wayland's been up to the SJC two or three times over these issues. So, it's, it's, you know, the open meeting law is, is difficult to deal with when you have a, when you have a board and you're not able to communicate with each other outside of the meeting, so... I mean, I hear what you're saying. I, I...
So...
I'm also concerned that if this information is made public and linked to names, that it could influence, one way or the other, the writers from being entirely objective. We're, we're mixing politics in with performance, and I don't think that's a good thing to do.
So, I have some other questions. On our evaluation tool, which, you know, we all saw last, last year's evaluation, on the section that says town manager section, there's a right-hand column for comments that is, it's unclear whether we're supposed to actually say things there or not. Some people did, and some people said nothing. I think I'm one of the people who said nothing, because it was in the town manager's section. So, I think we need to specify when, when we give the form out, whether, what is expected of us in that column?
That doesn't really have anything to do with the policy. This is complicated enough if we can kind of stick on the policy.
Um, I also, then, I wonder, after the summary has been prepared and presented to the public, Peter, this is a question for you, can an individual board member choose to release his or her evaluation publicly?
Not under this policy. If you read the last paragraph, copy, par, uh, page, on page three, under ten, a copy of the signed summary performance evaluation is delivered to the town clerk for release when requested after the individual evaluations are placed on file in the human resources department. Copy of the summary is placed in the town manager's personnel file. Individual board member evaluations will be placed in a separate file with the town manager's personnel file and are not to be destroyed. Unless the individual member's evaluation is discussed during a public meeting, the individual evaluation is not subject to release to the public, so...
And that would be either by the writer of it or the town, correct?
I mean, discussed during the meeting, that language you're talking about?
No, the business about not subject to being released. That applies both to the writer of the, that particular review and the town.
Right.
So, if, for example, it was me, okay, and the summary evaluation was being discussed at a meeting in the future, and I didn't like the summary evaluation, or at least that it didn't include a comment that I thought was poignant, and I pulled out my evaluation, just, I need to give this as an example. just I need to give this as an example, and I read, here's what I wrote in this section. Does that automatically release the document?
Yes. In fact, under the open meeting law, any documents that are used at a public meeting, even if they would be exempt under the public records law, are public records. So if you bring a document to a public meeting and use it, it's a public...
So why bother doing a policy? You should put into this policy that when we meet to discuss the summary evaluation, that no individual board member will bring a copy of their individual, their individual evaluation. If you want to keep it from getting released, and you bring it to that meeting and you cite from it, boom.
Well, then, then a board member that's disgruntled can circumvent the open meeting, can circumvent the town manager review policy by bringing their individual...
I'm saying, don't bring it.
And it also, to me, Peter, violates the charter, which says that the summary evaluation is the public record, not the individual evaluation. So now there's a loophole for a board member with an axe to grind to release their individual evaluation if they don't like the summary evaluation. That's not fair to the employee, me or any other town manager.
I'm trying to defend that position.
No, I agree, I agree.
If it violates the charter, and, you know, that it be, it wouldn't, I mean, shouldn't violate the charter, obviously, there might be consequences for it, so...
So, can we change that sentence to say that individual evaluations are not subject to release to the public? And then if someone comes in and reads part of theirs and it becomes public, they violated our policy?
And then what do we do?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know how any of this works.
How do other states do this?
Other towns, towns, not states.
No.
They don't release the individual evaluations. They don't...
Well, how do they, I mean, I'd like to know how other towns do this, because this has been a real thorn for several years here. I was going to ask another question. Are, once the individual member evaluations are put in the town manager's personnel file, do we have the right to go in and look at them?
Yes.
I've been told yes by...
You know, I discourage individual board members going into personnel files. I mean, you operate as a board, you're not as individuals. If you wanted to review some personnel file of any employee of the town, I think that should be a decision of the board, a vote of the board to allow that to happen. I don't, I don't think individual board members should be going through personnel.
What is the merit? So this policy requires that individual evaluations be kept in a personnel file? Why is that? I mean, I don't...
Those are private, those are private documents.
Right, so to me, they shouldn't be in the personnel file.
Those are exempt from the public records law.
But they shouldn't be in the personnel file, then?
Why do we need to keep the summary, the individual evaluations after the summary's Is there a really, is there a, is there a law that requires us to keep them? Because once you compile the final document, that's the public record. Why do you need the individual, because they were never discussed at a public meeting, they're in the personnel file, nobody can see them. Why keep them?
They're used to compile the summary, basically.
And the summary's done, the summary's out.
Well, I don't have the answer to that question when I said...
I'd like to know the answer to that, Allison.
I could get you a response to that.
If there's no requirement that it be retained, then we have the option of saying...
Destroy it.
Right. The policy is written that they won't be destroyed.
No, but I'd like to change that.
Right.
Well, also, the date that says it'll start in January, we changed...
I actually went backwards from the end of this, dates-wise, and it still is, it needs to start in January. I guess, can we set this aside, and then, Peter, I don't know whether you and I want to connect, I don't, I don't know how we fix this.
I, I got, you know, I mean, we can continue to discuss it. I've got the general idea of what the board's concerns are.
I also was going, going, I'm sorry. I was going to suggest that all the places that it has the human resources director handling this, why, why do we have even that interim step? Why not send everything directly to town council? And I think it should be town council, not labor council, if it gives us more choices.
Can we just ask the chair to please work with council and bring this back in a couple weeks?
Yep.
It's five minutes to seven. Our public meeting starts at seven o'clock. I, I'm going to be honest with you, we got through more than I thought we would, so I'm very happy. We got through this much. Do you want it, there are some that are very quick, if the board is ready to do it. The anti-harassment policy and the investigations policy have been reviewed by town council. I gave those to you a week in advance to review. I think they're ready for you to adopt them, and I'd ask you to adopt them as presented.
I'm sorry, I have some...
So let's see them one at a time.
I have some suggestions that...
On which?
Anti-harassment policy that I think...
Are they short, or are they going to require it?
I think they probably, I'm happy to work with you afterwards if you want. I think there's some rearrangement that needs to happen. I'm concerned about the way it's written, it seems to be a little loose or ambivalent about whether bullying and intimidation are at the same level of not allowable as sexual harassment and discrimination are. And I, so there were some places I would suggest changes. I also wondered if we wanted, I thought we had talked about including elected and appointed officials on this.
I'm sorry, including elected officials?
Elected and appointed officials on the harassment, anti-harassment.
I thought it's part of that already. Oh, I read it.
I think it just says employees, and that's why I, I wondered.
Okay, so we'll have to come back to that one. Investigations, I assume we need to come back, do I have a number of questions on that one?
And by the way, each time I read this, I think so, we have to put the Jennifer Evans investigation into town report, according to this. A report summarizing the results of the investigation shall be printed in the next annual town report.
That has been completed. We are.
Okay.
The next policy is a liaison policy, which I assume we need to get back to as a group to either decide, yea or nay, keeping all of these liaisons and/or changing what the expectation is.
I agree.
And then the social media policy, does anyone have any changes or questions on that?
I didn't even get to read that one.
I read it three times, and I'm still trying to figure out what it is you can, I know what it is you can do, but I'm still trying to figure out what it is you can't do. You can't use a town computer in order to engage in social media unless the social media page is sponsored by the town. However, you can't use a town computer to use your private social media account and make a post that has anything to do with the town, with a town seal or something like that. I've read the thing three times, and I'm more confused each time I read it.
I think this needs a lot of discussion.
Now, it might be correct.
All right, I guess all four of those are coming back another time, then?
But...
Well, which of the four that are coming back?
Anti-harassment, investigation, liaison, and social.
So the annual advisory committees to annual reports, basically, I think...
What are you, what are you reading?
This was the list.
Investigation policy.
Advisory committees to provide annual reports policy.
Of what? I don't even know what policy you're in, I'm sorry.
It's a board policy 2019-13. I think you listed it on this overview thing tonight.
What's the number, please?
BOA 2019-13. It's listed as number 10 on Mark's overview tonight, meetings with advisory committees. And it turns out that the term advisory committees doesn't really mean anything. I think all committees are appointed. I thought that we should revise this to say something about, it's unrealistic to meet with all the committees every year, but...
I'm starting recommending a nomination of a policy.
I know, I don't recommend, I don't, people should...
All right, so we need to get back to that one as well.
So I'll just bring everything else after town manager review policy back.
Yeah, maybe we want to have a workshop.
Another one. Why don't I talk to you about...
Is next Monday night available?
I'm not available, because when the board voted last week that you weren't going to meet, I made plans, so I am not available next Monday.
Could we meet without?
No.
I would recommend you don't.
One that pertains to a couple of these, I would not do that.
Okay.
Can we just meet in two weeks at six o'clock?
We are, to do goals.
Can we move goals and finish with this?
Sure.
We will, the town manager and I can figure this out somehow.
We may as well get through this.
We're close.
We're trying.
You had sixty, think about this, board. You had sixty policies, you're down to seven. You did a great job. This was a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, and I appreciate Mark, all of the effort that you and Don have put in to organize it for us.
All right. So we will, do we need to let folks in the hallway know that we are...
It's not a, it's a public...
I know, I know. They're all still standing out there. Do you have to go back up to the first page?
Hey, deputy.
All right.
Steel.
So it is seven o'clock, and we are going to continue our regularly scheduled select board meeting. We will, I'm going to review the agenda now. We'll then have our public comment period and announcements, followed by the town manager's report, which will include potential agenda, introduction of a new deputy fire chief. We will have a legislative update from state representative Harrington. We will have an update from the town manager on town hall hours for the coming holiday. We will have an update on the 2021 budget schedule of upcoming meetings. We will discuss and potentially approve a letter of support regarding the forest legacy area designation. Under other business, we have three items. Potential approval of a one-day beer and wine license from Friends of Prescott for a holiday party. We will have a discussion potentially addressing domestic violence. We will have a discussion around a potential process for considering an opt-out clause in the town manager's contract. We then have our ongoing issues A through K, on which we may get updates. We have an opportunity for liaison reports and one set of minutes to review and approve. So who has announcements?
I have a couple, if I may. I'm very, very pleased to read into the record a letter that we received from the Mass Municipal Association, if I may, dated today. Dean Mr. Haddad, congratulations, the town of Groton is the category three winner of the MMA Municipal Website Award. The town's website scored highest in categories that evaluated navigation and organizational material, convenience of information, functionality, and overall experience of the website. The MMA applauds your efforts in making this website an effective tool for your community. So I want to congratulate Mike Chason and Nick Batchelder, our IT department, putting this together. There had been some discussion on, do we buy a website off the shelf? Do we create our own website? And we decided to create our own website, and we all knew what a great website it was, and having it validated by the MMA is outstanding. So at the MMA Annual Convention on Saturday, January 25th, at four o'clock, they're going to make an award to the town, so somebody, somebody from the town will be there. But I just wanted to make that announcement. I'm very excited, and I want to congratulate Mike and Nick. The second announcement that I have is today, the Groton School came in with their annual annual tax payment check. The check was $150,000, which is $5,000 more than last year. So they continue to grow that every year, and I'm very, very pleased, and I want to thank the Groton School for that check. That's all I have. Thank you, Allison.
Very good, thank you. Any other announcements? Yeah, Becky?
Maybe I missed something, Mark, you didn't want to announce about the charter?
I was going to do that under the review on ongoing issues, to take it off the list, but now that Becky brought that up, I will tell you, the governor Baker on Tuesday signed the Groton Charter into law. Our new law, our new charter is operational.
Yay.
We operate under the new charter.
Long time coming.
Yeah. So I'm going to take that off the list, but we'll get to that later.
And related to both the website and the charter, Mark, could you make sure that both the old charter and the new charter are now on the website in ways that it's very clear which one is the one we're following now?
That's a great point, Becky, yes.
I don't want the old one to just disappear, because, you know, for research purposes.
No, we'll archive it. Mike, I'll work with you on that, and Mike Chason?
Right. And please share our congratulations to Mike and Nick. I think the website is a really great accomplishment, a big improvement that they made happen.
Any other announcements? All right, any comment from the public? Wow, all righty.
Okay, so, into the town manager's report, I'm very excited to introduce Chief McCurdy, who has a very exciting announcement to make to the public and the board. Chief.
All right. Thank you for having me in tonight. If my voice isn't carrying well, I do have a little bit of a cold, so I can share. I'm very proud to be here tonight to introduce you to the new deputy fire chief. Today is actually his, his first day. Art Cheeks has time and again proven to be a capable and competent leader within the Groton Fire Department. For this reason, I found it appropriate to promote him to the position of deputy fire chief. As the deputy fire chief, Art will fill in for me whenever the need arises and serve the community well. Tonight, we're, where it's his first day, we're actually going to have Mike Bouchard come up and issue his oath of office, followed by his wife Barbara pinning him with his badge. And once that's done, Art has a couple words that he would like to, to say to everybody, so I'll pass it to you.
Twenty minutes of your time?
Yeah, a short twenty-minute speech.
Do you read right here, please? Do you, Art, the chief, solemnly swear that you faithfully and impartially, if you repeat after me?
Oh, repeat after you, there we go.
My fault. I, Art, the chief.
Do solemnly swear that you faithfully and impartially...
Do faithfully swear that I faithfully and partially...
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As the duly-appointed deputy fire chief.
As a duly-appointed deputy fire chief.
In and for the town of Groton.
In and for the town of Groton.
According to the best of my knowledge.
According to the best of my knowledge.
And abilities.
And abilities.
And in accordance with the rules and regulations.
And in accordance with the rules and the regulations.
Of the Groton Fire Department.
Of the Groton Fire Department.
The bylaws of the town of Groton.
The bylaws of the town of Groton.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States. Congratulations.
We're seeing a public problem on day one.
On that nice white shirt.
First, I just, I thank you all for coming. I appreciate your support, as always. I thank the select board, I thank Chief McCurdy.
Can you just step closer to the microphone?
I really, I really enjoy serving this community. I've done it for 12 years. I, I'm, you know, I've been very committed to this position and this job, and I hope to continue to serve you all well. Like I said, I want to thank everybody in this room, most of all, I want to thank my family for all of their support. I couldn't have done any of this without, without you guys. So I appreciate it, I love you, and I look forward to continuing to serve the public here in Groton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Hold on, you missed a step.
Thank you.
I'm not shaking heads.
Thank you so much. Glad to have you here.
Phil Betty, chief. Madam Allison? Sheila Harrington, state representative, is here for a legislative update. Representative asked you to come to the table?
Thank you very much for having me. I know when I was originally going to come today, I was going to explain the comedy of errors that is the charter. However, what I do have today is the actual charter, signed by the governor, he extended over trips today. But I think the idea was, since we've got that out of the picture and finally put to bed, that I can maybe update you on some other things that have been going on. So some things that have been going on are not all the way through, many things. One in particular is supplementary budget. It passed in the House, but it has not passed in the Senate. So that is something that's going to be taking a little bit longer, I think, than was expected. a little bit longer, I think, than was expected. As you may or may not know, formal sessions end in the House on the third Wednesday of... Well, it's not supposed to go into Thursday. It did this time, but normally it should end at midnight, by midnight on Thursday. So they won't go back and meet again until January. So there are certain things that didn't completely get finished. Some did. Some have probably caught your attention more than others. The distracted driving bill was passed. And this is really something that's been in the works for a very long time. Quite honestly, it looked like it was going to pass last session, but for whatever reasons, it didn't. Part of the reasons being that there was a lot of work with the conference committee to make sure there was no racial profiling with regard to cell phone usage in that they felt that most, that some people in a lower economic, socioeconomic level would not have a smartphone that would enable them to do the hands-free. So there's now very few phones coming out that don't have that capacity. So it's, I think it's something that hopefully time will improve. But the importance of getting it out there, I think, was pretty evident to everybody.
So it did pass? Is that what you said?
It did pass. It passed in the House two weeks ago, I believe. And I believe it passed in the Senate on Thursday morning, early Thursday morning.
The governor signed it at three o'clock today.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, it got passed by both houses. That one did make it through.
Right, okay.
One of the ones that also has been sort of hitting everybody's radar is the House 4137, which is the Economic Opportunity Educate... Excuse me, not economic, Educational Opportunity Bill. And this one too was something that people thought was going to pass last session. It went into conference committee and the House and Senate could not agree. This year, a different conference committee was put together and they were able to bring it to resolution. Obviously, there's multiple pieces. In fact, I copied a few sets of these and you may each want to look at this. And I have some sort of explanation of the various sections. But it does raise what would have been the foundation budget. Not enough, if you want my opinion, but that's just my opinion. And it also implements more standards and more reporting requirements, which I honestly don't think is a great idea either. But what it does do is it gives the district the opportunity to give their own three-year target and to start to look at how they're going to meet their targets and how they're going to use their money. One of the advantages of it is the little bit more money that's going to the cities and towns with it is going to be really relegated to them. And in some instances, if it isn't all utilized in one calendar year, it's still, it can carry over in some respects. So I'll give you each a little bit of that. Most recently too, we had the flavored tobacco bill. And this one bans really all flavored tobacco in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, whether it's for an electronic device, whether it's menthol cigarettes, whether it's chewing tobacco. The biggest issue with that one, quite honestly, was the issue of menthol. It takes menthol cigarettes off the market here in Massachusetts. I actually spoke against that bill. And it's not because, well, I'm not a smoker and I'm not a vapor, but it's because I don't think that it's actually doing what they think it's going to do. So for instance, we're very close to the state of New Hampshire, but most of Massachusetts people are within, you know, hour to hour and a half drive of a border. And I think what we're seeing happen is that we're not seeing people, even with the governor's ban on vaping, we're not see, on selling vaping products. I don't think people, from what I've understood and from the people with whom I've spoken, some disgruntled, obviously, with regard to the governor's ban and now this further ban, but a lot of people are just taking their business to the state of New Hampshire. And the problem with that is that if you were, say, a business in Pepperell and you used to offer menthol cigarettes and you had a regular clientele that came into your entity, well, you may go up a couple miles up the road to Hollis or Nashua and while you're there, buy your milk and your bread and your everything else. So I feel like we're going to hurt Massachusetts businesses along the border, but I don't know that we're going to stem the tide of people using these types of tobacco products. So I have some serious concerns with that. One of the good things about it is that some of the revenue that will come in from certain excise taxes. Still, for instance, if you are found with the product, as I understand it, if you're found with a product in Massachusetts and you didn't pay an excise tax on it and you've bought it in another state, you may be charged a tax. And I don't know how they would police that, to be truthful with you. But it's, to me, it's a very... I don't know. To me, it was an overreach of a bill. I did not vote for it. So those have been sort of the big ones. Breakfast after the bell has just been enacted as well. And breakfast after the bell is, if you have a community, a school district in which up to 60%, or I believe at least 60% of your students fall within a certain socioeconomic level, then they, and they can't always have breakfast before. What they're thinking is keeping it open throughout the morning gives people a chance to eat when they're hungry as they go forward. If they didn't maybe have something at their house that they could... You don't have to get there absolutely at the crack of dawn. They'll serve food after the bell. So that one passed pretty overwhelmingly, actually. I'm trying to think of, the liquor bill is still in the works, I believe. It closed?
Are we close to getting that approved?
Oh, I was like, wait a minute, no. How'd you feel that? It's in the process. It's in the process. But I think I've talked to you several times about it, but the process is frustrating. And it, what happens is on that nature of a bill, we have to bring the bill before House Counsel to have them do some redrafting type of language to it before we can even push it forward.
What, this is our request for more liquor license?
Another liquor license.
That's the one, Becky, yes.
Yeah. So it doesn't seem like it would be that hard of a bill. But they...
The charter didn't seem like it should be that hard either.
I know, I know. But they certainly took their time. The one thing about that is we were given the opportunity to, whether House Counsel said, "Do you want to have the secretary's office take the first whack at it?" And then, and then we would get it. And we said, "No, start with the, start with House Counsel, because they're going to pick out more things than the secretary's office." So after that, it will then go to a steering committee and it will go from being a House docket number to a House bill number. And then it has to have a hearing on it. So that has to come probably now at the end of this session or toward the end of it, when they do bills that haven't yet had, like, the bill was filed after the hearing on that issue would have been done already. So they have to have a special hearing for all the late-file bills. So it'll probably go in as a late file. But it's something that I believe can also pass in the informal session next fall too. So that's beneficial. And then the other thing that I've been working on legislatively is I'm not sure if people up here are familiar with the new Lowell Judicial Center that's going to be coming in. So presently, there is a district court and a housing court, Superior Court, General Court. They're all in Lowell already. What there isn't is there is no probate court. So people from our area, if they're going through a probate matter, an estate or guardianship, a family law matter, they have to go to Cambridge right now. And that's going to bring up a whole next thing I'm going to talk to you about. But, you know, the average commute from our area in the morning is about two and a half hours to get to the courthouse. So that is going to be a... I've been working on helping get the statute changed to get those positions in. And that's really going to help the people in this area that are struggling to get daycare and things like that at the crack of dawn in order to get it to the courthouse. So that brings up another major thing that is now being bantered about up at the State House. And it's called congestion in the Commonwealth. So for those of you who are fortunate enough to not drive into the city of Boston in the morning... And I have to say, I don't, I usually don't have to go in early in the morning. So I'm not complaining for my own benefit. But I did recently, one day, have to go in early in the morning and it took four hours for me to get to downtown Boston. Now, that could have been a particularly bad day. But it highlights for us what we call the congestion crisis in the Commonwealth. We, all of our roads are being overtaxed. Some of our tunnels, I believe, it might be the Sumner and the Callahan, but one of them has to go through extensive renovations. Essentially, some of these bigger arteries and tunnels have not been worked on to an improvement standard to make them safe in, I don't know, 30, 40 years at least. In fact, I think Sumner Tunnel, it's been since its inception. And as anyone who goes through can see these tiles coming off and things like that. So there is going to be, I think, we're going to be voting on a rather huge bond bill for transportation. One of the things that's been also recommended is that we need to change the way we allot the work for these types of projects. And I think you can all remember the Big Dig. So one of the things that is statutorily guided right now that I think we're going to work to change is that under our statutes, they have to take the person who gives the lowest bid. They can't factor in the time. So for instance, if you had somebody who said, I'm using silly numbers, but I'll fix the Sumner Tunnel for $1 million and it's going to take two years of closures. And then you've got someone who says, "I'm going to do it for $1 million and one, and I can do it in six months." We'd still have to go with the guy who's going to do it for two years. So that's obviously a... I won't say... That's obviously a statute that doesn't make a lot of sense. And it hurts the people because, you know, there's... The amount of people that has, are starting to go into the city of Boston or have been starting to go into the city of Boston over the last decade is astronomical. And, you know, we also have to change the way we work here in Massachusetts. I know the Secretary of Transportation said not everybody has to work in the Seaport or Kendall Square, that there are other places to open businesses throughout the state. So they're going to try to really give some sort of incentives for people to be moving out their businesses out of the more congested area. And in addition to that, they've done some studies with regard to comparing us with another major metropolitan area, which is San Francisco. And essentially, we and San Francisco have a very similar workforce base, to say. But they have 40,000 less cars going into San Francisco every day than we do going into Boston. And they're going to try to give incentives to try to have businesses that can have people work at home and not come into the city do that. I mean, I think some, some companies are doing it, but clearly not enough if we have 40,000 more cars. But all of our highways, I think the Southeast Expressway was built for 50,000 cars a day. And I think its average is 200,000 a day. So we're way over on what our roads were built to handle. And we've, it's been let go, shall I say, to a point that it's really becoming a concern, a danger in some cases. So the two major closures are going to be the Sumner Tunnel and the Alston-Brighton exit coming off of the Mass Pike. For some reason, is one, I don't take it very often, but that's one that supposedly is going to have a significant closure period. So just something to look forward to. But just wanted to let you know that that is, that is still, that is in the works. There is also going to be, hopefully, a housing choice bill that's going to come through. But that's been sort of mired in committee work and stuff and it isn't out yet. So as soon as I hear more on that one, because along with the congestion crisis, we have a housing crisis as well. So those are two major areas that we're working on kind of on a more global scale. So that's pretty much the update.
Thank you for coming in. Do folks have questions? Yeah, John?
Is there anything brewing in the State House relative, that would result in an increase in the tax we pay on gasoline?
That has not, it's not in the works right now. It keeps being bantered about as part of the ways to fix our roads is to increase the tax. I think that the governor initially came out and they don't call it a tax. They call it something else, but...
Well, it, that something else in California is what makes it cost $4 a gallon.
Right, right. And I don't think that it's going to fly. I, I, I could be wrong, but I didn't get the impression the legislature is going to go with that proposal. But things can change. But at this moment, it's not, it's not brewing, shall I say.
Other questions? Yeah, Becky, more?
Is there anything, is there any thinking to improve public transportation to address the congestion?
Yeah, so public transportation is another part of this. I mean, I could actually give you guys a copy.
I don't want a whole lot of detail, but it's...
Show you all the provisions of it. But there's going to be sort of a, well, they, I mean, they just put 80 new cars on the, on the tracks, so to speak, this, recently this year. They didn't pan out that well, but they put new ones on. So one of the, one of the problems is with our, with our public transportation. The secretary was, was impressing this upon people that unlike certain cities where you could take one car and you can change it for another car, we don't have that luxury. So ours were built, our different lines were built at different times by different companies. Some go underground, some go like a trolley. They don't, you can't say, "Okay, I'll grab a green line and throw it on the red line." It just isn't, it doesn't work. We should have, I guess hindsight's 2020, but when they started the system, if they had known what it was going to grow to, they probably would have been better off putting in all the same cars like New York and Chicago did. That being said too, another issue that people brought up as, as kind of something you're always hearing could possibly happen is that there'd be some sort of direct public transportation underground from North Station to South Station. And that is not going to happen. Apparently, the level of depth that they would have to go down to get below all the things that they'd have to get below to get there, it's just completely cost prohibitive. Somebody mentioned, "Maybe we need a monorail to go over it." And maybe that would be the way to go. I don't know, that sounds kind of expensive. But they're also going to try to increase the usage of water transportation. So you have now a few areas along the coast that are shuttling ferries in. Salem has one. I think there's at least one on the south shore. They're going to try to encourage people[1624.62] They're gonna try to encourage people that can get into the city without driving to, to use those modes of transportation and to put more ferries out there. But, definitely, the public transportation system is a main focus of, of the bond bill. So...
Other questions? Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. Just call me if you, do you wanna have the copy of the charter?
Mark, we can make a copy or...
Oh, you, I have another one back there if you want one.
I'd ask you to give it to the town clerk.
Okay.
Please.
He deserves it.
He deserves it, yes. Allison, you're fantastic.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Allison, I'd like to move our other business item, the domestic violence issue up now. There are several people here that wanted to discuss. I also invited Chief Lee and Sergeant Mead to join us, and I believe they're here.
Yes. Do you know what page that is on in our...
Uh, it's page sixty, it starts on in your packet.
Thank you.
Page fifty-nine. This was put on the agenda at the request of Becky, so I would imagine Becky would like to lead the discussion.
Well, sure, I'll just say that this grew out of comments, comments and conversation that I heard from various sources after the recent tragic death of a woman, allegedly by her husband. And, just what can we do about domestic violence? And so, part of what I found out is, various people in conversation, we realized, well, the police department deals with this, let's hear what they are already doing, and I think that it's actually quite extensive. So, that, I'm glad, thank you for coming and sharing that with us.
Great, thank you, thanks for having us here tonight. One of the things, learning from other departments I've worked in, makes it more sense to have one person oversee or supervise domestic violence calls with this follow-up and these services that are offered to the people that might need it. And, in, in, timing-wise, it didn't seem to help in this recent thing, but the beginning, excuse, the end of September, Sergeant Mead was picked for that position. And, prior to this, it's been kind of an ad hoc, whoever handled the case would try to do the follow-up, if the detective was available, they would do the follow-up. And one of the things we're trying to do right now, I was lucky enough, when I worked in the community of Lunenburg, Pittsburgh has a full-time domestic violence advocate on their staff as part of the city payroll. And, more than a handful of times, I used her services in Lunenburg. Chief from Pittsburgh was very cooperative and allowed her to come over and help us. And, the reason that was very important, although we handle these type of situations relatively frequently, a lot of times, people don't react to the police that well, in the sense, we'll, we'll offer services or give advice or try to suggest a course of action, ultimately comes down to the people in the situation that have to do certain things to get services or for us to take action. A lot of times, they're very hesitant for a whole host of reasons. And with this domestic violence advocate that Pittsburgh Police had, the woman is, I, I like to call her an expert in what she does, but she has the ability, she has the understanding, she has the empathy, she has the way to communicate with sometimes these victims and get them to help themselves, or provide the, the nudging or the encouragement to get it done. And, just as a anecdotal story, and this happened more than once, to be in a, a victim might be in the hospital because of a really bad situation and refusing to cooperate or even tell us anything. And, with her help, by getting her to the victim, many times, we're able to take action in that, or they would give us a statement, or they would, you know, start to go on the path of helping themselves. One of the things, we kind of lack that here right now, and one of the things Sergeant Mead's been working, trying to establish relationships with some of the social programs out of the Lowell area. We're kind of in a funny physical area, we're between Worcester and we're between Lowell, and we kind of land in the no-man's land. When I was in Lunenburg, it was great, we're all, everything fell under Worcester. If we're a little closer to Lowell, not that we're that far, they're a lot more receptive to providing us services and help. So, that's one of the things that Sergeant Mead's been tasked with, try to develop those relationships. And, it's, it's one thing for a police officer to go back and do follow-up, it's a whole nother thing to have a, a trained social worker, a clinician. And, I don't, you know, a lot of times, if the victims are female, they wanna talk to a female, you know, they respond better to a female. And it's just, in the, in our industry, there's not a lot of females that are police officers. We're lucky enough to have two, and some departments our size don't have any. So, that's good, it's great for the departments, but for her, because I put a lot of stuff on her shoulders, there's a lot of things that she's able to do better in a lot of ways. That's what we're working on right now. I don't know if you have any specific questions for...
I have a question. We got the advocate, whereas they're, they're employees of the police department...
Well, in, in the Fitz, the case of Pittsburgh PD, they have a budget, and they have a, you know, they have the ability, and she's a, she runs their family services unit, which is the number one task or goal is domestic violence.
So, is there... So, she's not a sworn officer?
No, she's a civilian.
So, is there any problem with this client privilege, with being a social worker, there's a, so, in other words, that advocate coming back to the police station, probably they have officers in the police station, and saying, Mrs. X is having a problem with Mr. X, and you guys need to...
So, she, so one of the things, now, I would imagine there is some sort of confidentiality.
There's probably ways around it, like...
Right. What, the, the, the benefit, what I saw firsthand with her, she was able to get victims to...
To do it themselves.
To initiate, to initiate and follow through and start taking services and try to help themselves. As far as what she would also run, and they have one through the district attorney's office called Domestic Violence Roundtable, which we belong to, and the district attorney and the specialized officers like Sergeant Mead will meet periodically, that's once a month, and talk about serious cases and what kind of next steps can we take. I don't foresee us, as a town this size, ever being in a place based on call volume, based on budget, to hire a civilian advocate. That being said, we belong to COIN, which is kind of a similar program based on mental health and substance abuse, and they have clinicians. That's a ten-town consortium that share these resources we all belong to. So, if there's a, a, a mental health follow-up, because we're not mental health clinicians, we're all, everybody on the police department is trained in at least mental health first aid or critical incident team training. And, that being said, it's, the next level of care is a, is a trained clinician. So, with COIN, we're able to go back to the house with a clinician, sometimes with a police officer if, if it's needed, or by themselves, and try to, once again, have these people get services. It's, it's, in, in that realm, when you have adults with mental health issues, it's hard to for, if they don't wanna take the services, you can't force them unless it rises to a, a certain level. And so, I was hoping, you know, at some point, looking for maybe grants and to start some sort of clinician that many jurisdictions can share the services of.
So, you're saying we do have access through the COIN?
We do with COIN, but if they're...
For some regional services.
Right, and their, their goal, or their, is specialized towards mental health and substance abuse.
Right.
But, like the mirror that, or copy that kind of model, where we could have that for domestic violence.
Right.
And, and the police are always in a pretty precarious position where they go to these domestic violence, because it often gets turned on them, and with the laws the way they're written, we're restricted, the police are restricted in the way they can act, right?
Correct.
How they can act. And, it's, it's often turned on the police. With that advocate, it might be a little different.
So, question would be, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, and Mark might be able to help, but Massachusetts has a new act called the Municipal Modernization Act, which allows communities to cross town borders and work with surrounding communities in order to facilitate services that may not be available within the community itself. Would it make sense to explore an opportunity to maybe hire some type of domestic counselor that could be shared with our surrounding communities? So, if air needed some help, or if Tingsborough, for example, or Pepperell, or Groton, whatever the case may be, that you could have someone under contract where the cost is shared collectively by the member communities or the surrounding communities? Is that something that might be of value?
That would be great, that would be actionable.
Mark, you might wanna look into that and see if the Municipal Modernization Act would cover something like that, because that's kind of like outside the borders of the way it at least was explained to me, but it still might work.
It's nice, you know, we're obviously a small jurisdiction, and we, we're surrounded by a lot of very like jurisdictions, and obviously, the need for a full-time, even amongst ten towns, for example, isn't necessary. There'd be like a clinician that works full-time, and like you said, under contract.
Under contract.
Usually an ad hoc when the, when the case needs.
Right.
Under the CIT model, or the COIN model, when they have a, a real crisis, and this, this is still in the developing stages, we, say, say Pepperell had a, a very serious situation, Sergeant Mead would be one of the people going to help Pepperell with, especially trained officers from other departments to try to defuse the situation and try to avoid a higher use of force, or whatever, whatever the situation may encounter. Particularly, I find, in domestic violence, it makes a big difference to have a non, someone that doesn't, that's not a police officer.
Right.
Because there's a lot, there's a lot of resistance to that, and for whatever reason, and there's many reasons for that. So, I, I think we can help each other, but I think a, some of it specialized and trained in the, in the techniques and the specialties would be very beneficial to all the communities around.
So, there was also a suggestion made, and I think you can see in your packet, that a relatively low-cost effort that could be made is to distribute posters that, to go in bathroom stalls, which is, you know, a place of privacy where people can receive some information, and this one, if you scroll down, I think to the bottom, Mark, has like a tear-off with phone numbers. And so, it's not a big expense to duplicate these and, and put them in public buildings and in all, in all the bathroom stalls. Is that something that we would need to consider more, to vote on, to...
If the board wants us to do something like this, I can work with the chief, and we can develop it and put it up. I don't think the board needs to vote on it.
I guess I would turn to you. Do you think that would be a useful thing to do?
I, I think so, because a lot of times, there's stigma with coming, seeking services and seeking help.
Right.
Sometimes people are not gonna come to the police station looking for a call. So, if we have any places that are, you know, maybe not the town hall, but maybe the public library, or other public buildings that people might not run into that, worry about that stigma, I think it's a great idea.
And it's, you know, goes up once and lasts a long time.
We can't force businesses, for instance, to, you know, put these in their, in their areas, so we really would be putting in, them into town-owned facilities. And may, I don't know where the school's at with it, but, you know, where the edge, you know, the break is there, but...
I think a lot of the businesses would be willing to cooperate.
That would be voluntary, they'd have to volunteer to do it.
It's certainly something I wouldn't be opposed to going around and asking the businesses if they would be helpful.
I mean, we can do marketing, but we can't say do it.
Right.
Right.
Ask politely.
Are there other examples of things, you know, similar to this, or kind of whatever that, that you guys think would be helpful that we could help to provide, either to you guys' resources or to the public?
Just, just the one I was talking about, and I'd love to have input with Mark to, to develop this, something with maybe a local services. I, I would think people, if they know that somebody can, or both, national and local. I know with the suicide hotlines, they're a national level thing, and we, we do get referrals from them pretty frequently. So, people aren't necessarily afraid to call it, but if someone knows that they can get services that are nearby, they might be more willing to make the phone call, so. As far as, you know, for us, I, I think, I, just what we're talking about now.
I think it's really great that we're having this conversation, too. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for, for coming, and I think Allison had mentioned at the first meeting, and this is something that crosses all, all the boundaries, it's not, you know, limited socio-economically, or age, or ethnicity, or even gender. I mean, it really, and it, it's happened so privately that getting assistance to people who need it is not necessarily easy, but whatever efforts we could take, I think would be useful.
And, and that's kind of another question I have for you guys, is what, if any, kind of data is available, not, obviously, in terms of details, I recognize the need for sensitivity there, but I think it's, it's so easy for folks who aren't directly impacted by things like this to look at it and say, oh, that doesn't happen here.
Right.
Is there...
Just without new research, like that's, we, this year alone, have handled about twenty-five domestic calls.
Okay.
Out of that, I think nine or ten resulted in criminal charges, arrests or charges. Other ones could be, you know, nothing to, two people fighting, or with no one wanting to talk to us at all.
Right.
We leave, we will, we'll leave information, we'll, we'll advise them of their rights, what they can, what they can seek for services, and sometimes it decides to cooperate.
A lot of what you leave is required by laws.
Correct.
You have to inform them of their rights, you have to be orally and written.
Yes.
And then there's the, the cases that we don't hear about, but we get the 209A violation, you know, orders that we have to serve afterwards, so the restraining order later on. So, we might not know that they're having problems, and then all of a sudden, we have to serve a restraining order. So, that, there's that piece as well.
The first time I heard of it is when we get the legal paperwork.
Right, but this, it sounds like this is multiple times a month. You know, if not once a week, it's in that ballpark of happening right here.
The one thing, we've taken steps, it was just prior to the incident, Becky was talking about, is, is someone's always paying attention to the ball, and making sure that it's getting followed up in a coordinated matter, or manner, instead of just each officer worrying about the, their own.
Right.
So, that's, that's, I think that's gonna be a big help moving forward, and some other projects we're talking, it'd be great.
I was told that there is actually a, a committee that has some officialness in Westford. I mean, I think the town manager serves on that committee. Are you aware of that? It's called the Westford Coalition for Nonviolence. Group of residents, town employees, victims, and professionals have joined together. I heard...
Familiar with the detective, I can certainly reach out to her and get more information.
Okay. Yeah. Because if there's something, again, if there's something other people are doing that we could do easily, it'd be inexpensive.
We don't need to recreate the will, right?
Put something on the website, exactly, right.
I'll reach out to the rest of her and see what they do.
Great.
One of the other places you may wanna consider reaching out to would be the houses of worship within the town of Groton, because I think Becky's point would be, is a valid point, I've been thinking about it. You know, somebody goes to the restroom to use the facilities, and they're upset, and they're thinking about what something that might have happened, whether, wherever they are, that it gives them a moment to reflect, and if they're sitting there doing their business, and they look in the wall, and they see this little handout, that maybe the house of worship, as well as the town facilities, would be a good place. And, I, I can't see a better person to reach out than coming from a police officer. I think it would make a lot of sense.
Well, we do have an interfaith council, which you don't have to go to all the individual churches.
Right. Good point, too.
Go through them.
I know somebody I can speak to.
Uh, I know we have people in the audience, is, are there other comments that you guys would like to share? Anybody?
Do you mind taking the microphone?
Sure. Hi, I'm Alyssa Dallas, I'm a social worker, I was also Mary Fairbairn's neighbor, she was the one who was involved in the incident in October. I guess, I just wanna know what, what more we can do as, as neighbors, not only speaking from the literal sense, but just as a community, if there's more engagement efforts, or...
Just as a, a suggestion, when people call us, particularly, you say they hear something or they've heard something, it's not uncommon for us to go to a call and get a lot of resistance, or I don't know what you're talking about, or for some reason not cooperate. If someone, a neighbor, felt comfortable enough to initiate contact on their own, I'm not saying they have to do that, but if they're in a position they felt comfortable doing that, they're probably more likely to get a, a good response from a person in need than we are. I'm not saying we won't go, we definitely will do that, but the like, the likelihood goes up if it's a non, if it's your need, or coming over and saying, is there anything I can help you with, or is there, I'm hearing cer- certain things, and maybe you need to, you know, you coax them along. That would be my number-one suggestion. Please call us also, but once again, we're limited in our, in our, on what we can do if, if people don't want, don't want the help of the services.
So, Mark, if we can pursue, we'll work with Mike, and...
I'll be working with the chief.
This poster, I think, actually can, is in use in one of the local churches. So, but there may be better ones or other information that we wanna include that has some local, you know, options, whatever. But, thank you for pursuing this. And I guess I wanted to say, I have been impressed that people want to find ways to address this issue. I, you know, there's, we don't need to overcome the resistance that, oh, this doesn't happen here, why are we paying any attention? What, why are we spending time on this? I think that people are aware that it's important.
So, we will continue to try and do what we can to raise awareness, and thank you guys for all you do.
Yes.
I assume that there are, there are pieces in place, too, to help support officers and other folks who are dealing with this on a weekly basis, because that could wear on one as well. All right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel, thanks, Mark. Back to the town managers' report, if that's okay?
Yep.
So, as is our practice Thanksgiving, town hall will be closed on Thursday, the twenty-eighth, and Friday, the twenty-ninth. Town hall employees will be charged either personal vacation type for Friday's hours, and as is usually our practice and history, on Wednesday, we'll probably close town hall early that day as well. We'll post on the website and everything else. Budgets would do in my office on Friday, November twenty-second. I'm gonna start my meetings with the department heads on the twenty, on December second. I've given you a budget review schedule, and as always, I invite you to attend any and all of the meetings, they'll be held here in this room, starting Monday morning, I believe, at eight fifteen with the library. So, this will be a very difficult and busy budget season. I will tell you, one of the directives that the board gave me was to work at the schools. So, I have a meeting set up with the school superintendent, school business manager, and the Dunstable Town Administrator for December fifth. So, I'll be meeting with them as we go through the process. So, you know, Laura and I are talking regularly, especially with the Florence Roach project, but we will continue that discussion, I'll keep the board apprised as, as we go. The budget season is off and running, I think I have, all the budgets have been submitted, so I know the finance team and I are chomping at the bit to get started on it.
So, Mark, before you move on.
Sure.
It occurred to me when I read the thing about the award for the town website on Saturday, January twenty, whatever it is, fifth. I know it's a long way away, but do you have a sense of when the Saturday morning budget meeting is going to happen?
I gotta talk to the finance committee, it's probably the last Saturday or first Saturday, last Saturday of January or first Saturday of February.
So, the last Saturday of January is the twenty-fifth, so that's the... So the last Saturday of January is the twenty-fifth, so that's the MMA.
Okay.
Convention.
So it might be the following.
So the first Saturday is February first and I was just wondering whether that.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to the chair of the finance committee, who I see him sitting right there.
Likely. Likely.
And we'll work out that date.
Okay. The earlier that we know, the better.
Yep, I, I agree a hundred percent. Um, okay, any other questions on the budget? Okay, um, at your November fourth meeting, the board had requested, uh, that a letter be drafted, uh, to the Department of Conservation and Recreation in support of the Forest Legacy Designation. Uh, Nick did a great job, I think, drafting the letter. I put it in your packet, it's on page, uh, what page is it on? It's on page fifty-eight of your packet. Are there any questions and if it's, if it's okay with the board, I would ask the chair to sign the letter. Do you have the letter?
Um, yeah, I had a conversation with Nick late this afternoon. I said, what's this about South Central and Southeastern Massachusetts? And, uh, he said he was gonna change those, that that was actually an error on his part.
Well, I have the letter. Tell me what you want changed and I'll change it.
Well, uh, Nick was gonna talk with you, so why don't you just get from him?
Okay.
It sounds, I mean, we're not in South Central or Southeastern Massachusetts and I think that the letter is supposed to reflect where we are.
Okay.
Um, so, so just talk with him and, and get his version of it.
Okay, and then once I make that edit, is, will the board authorize Allison to sign it?
It's fine with me.
It's okay, okay. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark, and please thank Nick too for his.
Oh yeah, he did a nice job on it, I think. Um, I'd ask the board to approve a one-day beer and wine license, uh, from the Friends of Prescott for a holiday party to be held on Saturday, December fourteenth, from five thirty to seven thirty.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have for the town managers' report. There's one oth- other item left on the, uh, other business.
Yep.
Hi, I'm sorry, I should have asked this question earlier at the beginning. I know, I saw the invitation to the interfaith council's tree lighting on, uh, Sunday. Is there somebody who already volunteered to do that, to be the representative?
I know the chair responded that she was unavailable.
Correct.
I, I'm going with my wife if you'd like me to do it.
That would be lovely.
That's great.
Thank you.
I'll be there, but I've done it.
She's the president and co-president of the interfaith council.
You'll be there. Well, they're one of the senior center and the council on aging, so, um, I think it's great for you to do it. I've done it the last couple of years and I'll be there, but I think it's, it's good for all of us to change things around.
Something like a nice Jewish boy lighting a Christmas tree.
That's, it's, that's the whole point. It's an interfaith council celebration of lots of holidays.
Alright, um, so moving on, we have one item under other business, which is a discussion around, uh, potential opt-out clause. It's in the town manager's contract. If I could ask town council to come on back up to the table. So attorney Barry and I have had several back and forth conversations, um, trying to get, to understand and make sure that a process and understanding is present. Uh, the current town manager's contract includes an opt-out clause, um, and either the town manager or the select board have the, the right to opt out of the contract prior to the end of December. Uh, I wanna be really clear that if the board doesn't want to move forward with any kind of vote or discussion, that's absolutely understandable and fine and nothing will change. If there is discussion, um, and the board moves forward and votes not to opt out, then also nothing will change. The, the documents that I've asked be included in the, uh, packet and that are here before us now focus on what the impacts and process would be if the board wanted to consider an opt-out, primarily so that we are all and the public is, um, informed around what, what the ramifications would be. This is not a, an easy topic to understand, um, and there are a number of documents that are involved. So the intent here tonight is to walk through the process, try and answer questions around the process. Um, at this point, we would then kind of go our, our separate ways, if you will, for a couple of weeks and potentially this would come back for a discussion in a couple of weeks on December ninth. So I'm gonna ask attorney Barry to jump in as soon as I start to go awry, um, please.
No, I, I agree. I think, uh, the discussion tonight should be limited to whether, uh, the board feels that it's, uh, uh, should consider and discuss further whether, uh, you should, uh, consider this issue of opting out. The, it, there were, I think both charters were included in the massive documents you got, obviously, after, as we learned tonight. Um, we're looking at the second charter, there were some minor differences between the two in terms of this, uh, subject, but, uh, that's basically what, uh, the board needs to consider tonight. Do you, do you want to, uh, put this on a future agenda and consider it further or, um, not?
Um, so the, the three documents at this point that would be relevant would be the town manager's contract, that new charter that has finally, thank you everyone who kind of approved, um, and then potentially the most recent evaluation of the town manager. Did you have a question, Josh?
More an observation than a request than, than a question, is that if there is nobody, or there aren't two members of this board at this moment, or three members of this board that are considering opting out, I don't see why we don't just put this to rest tonight, um, and not have to consider it in the future. I, I for one, um, don't mind sharing my opinion, having negotiated and worked with Mark collectively longer than all of you. That certainly, uh, Mark's attitude towards his job, his position, um, some of the things that he's been through in the past have made him a better town manager and that I think he's serving the town very well. And at this point, uh, I certainly think that, I don't think, I know that I'm in favor of him, uh, fulfilling the contract that we negotiated with him at least for another year and if not, through its, uh, next contract. So if a majority of the board feels the same way, I don't know why we're going through this exercise. I know we put that provision in there, but just pointing it out.
Um, so I guess I'll, I'll ask you, attorney Barry, we obviously don't wanna get in tonight to a discussion on the whole. What would your recommendation be in terms of, I mean, should, should we be, should I be asking Josh to make a motion to that effect? That we just not go anywhere with this or?
Uh, I mean, I, yeah, I, I, any, any member can make a motion at any time, um, and, uh, yeah, I think that's the consideration. The contract doesn't require you to do anything. If nothing happens, as the chair mentioned, um, the contract just continues for another year and possibly two years. Uh, um, I, I think the basic consideration is, uh, do the board members feel like it's, uh, uh, appropriate to enter into further discussions about the issue? I think we just consider this process as, um, allowing some time, you know, if you wanna discuss it more, um, allowing some time on a future agenda for that as opposed to going through that tonight. And, and if the determination is you don't wanna schedule it on a future agenda, then that's the end of it.
Becky?
Well, so, um, it's a totally new thing that, that we, um, put into the contract and I, I, we wanna thank Allison for thinking through how we handle it. Because we negotiated it in here, I think it's worth us taking the time to be thoughtful and, um, think through and, and have some discussion and I, I would rather not just jump to a, no, we don't need to talk about this vote tonight. Um, I think that may be this decision that we come to at our next meeting, but I think it deserves, um, some attention. We put it in the contract for a reason and so to ignore it just seems like we're not using, um, the process very well. I would support having it on the agenda in two weeks for further discussion.
Can I just come back to you? The, the last thing I did was ignore it. As a matter of fact, I contacted the chair and asked if we were gonna be discussing this, uh, a few weeks ago and since then, um, I have been thinking long and hard about this and I'm not ignoring it. I've gotten to reflect on it. So if you need two more weeks, I'm more than fine doing that. I just threw a suggestion out based on where the boards, board stood tonight, that's all.
Okay, any other thoughts at this point?
I, I just agree with Josh. As the newest member of the board and I, I evidently ignored it, I went over it very carefully and I'm coming in with a, kind of a clean perspective having read all the evaluations in the past and other items, but I, I agree with Josh and, and I don't know what's, I'm not gonna change my mind in two weeks unless something drastic happens between tonight and the next time we discuss it.
Okay.
I'm where John and Josh are and I, I take exception to anyone considering that I've ignored anything. I have not.
I don't think there's any serious accusation that people are ignoring things.
No, I, I certainly don't mean to imply that. I just think it deserves some discussion and some thoughtfulness. And I've been away, so I just came back to this and thought it was gonna happen in two weeks.
Um, so as an individual, I agree with Becky. That said, I would entertain a motion if someone wants to make one, that we not proceed with this any further.
So you're taking my recommendation tonight, is that what you think?
If someone wants to make a motion, we can.
I move that the select board not exercise the opt-out provision within the town manager's contract for the next year.
I thought you just.
I heard her just say she's supportive.
Well, but you also had said it was fine to wait.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Wait and have discussion in two weeks. Is there a problem with waiting to have discussion in two weeks?
So we have a, a motion on the table to end this conversation and not continue it, I guess?
Which has been seconded.
Under discussion?
Which has been seconded.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I heard the motion was not to opt out, right? Is that what your motion was?
The motion was not to opt out, under discussion?
Well, not, not to execute the option.
Becky asked me a question specifically, that I thought I would wait two weeks. I said that if the majority of this board was going to be in favor of not opting out, then I didn't see a need to go through all these documents and not that I don't appreciate that they were put together, but I just don't see a need to go down this road and go through any angst. However, I did say that if you needed more time, we could wait a couple of weeks. And then I heard three of my fellow board members all say that they supported the town manager and not going forward with the opt-out clause. Therefore, that would be a four to one vote if they all follow that line.
I don't think they did not that correctly.
I didn't hear that correctly?
No.
Allison specifically said she was where Becky is.
I thought you said where I was.
So it's a three to two situation.
I withdraw my motion in deference to my fellow board members' positions.
I, I will just add that I, I also.
You can make it.
Think that the, um, you know, this is not, this is a serious matter and I would venture to guess that most of the public did not know that this provision was in the contract and that there, there was the potential of considering it. So we might hear from the public about.
I think that where the, the contract is a, a public document and where this packet became public several days ago.
That's true. That's true. It did become public a couple of days ago.
This information is available to anyone who's interested in it at all times.
I can tell you that lots of people are asking me about it too. Almost everybody I talked to, so they're all asking me about it. They must pay attention to it. I think it was in the newspaper also, I'm not sure.
No, I thought Josh has withdrawn his motion.
Somebody else wants to make it. Or you'll let it go for two weeks.
Alright.
I'm, I'm concerned that two weeks from now, we're gonna be in the same place we are right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we have lots to do and, um, this was put in here for a reason and, and I believe, um, the attention to training and, and the performance since the contract was signed has been very good. Um, and that was really the reason this was put in here. Ie, if we hadn't seen some changes that we were looking for, then this might be the route to go. To go through a process of discussing, um, the retention or departure of the town manager again, this group can't do that between now and December thirty-first and reach any kind of conclusion. I just, I don't see it happening. So I'll make a motion, um, that we do not choose to exercise our right to opt out of the current contract.
Is there a second?
I second it the first time, I second it this time.
Reseconded, okay. Um, so we have a motion on the table. Any questions about the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay. Very good. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have our ongoing issues list. I don't know, Mark, are there items that?
Yes, we need to take the.
Yet the charter can come off now.
Charter, yay! I have no idea about this.
Okay. Does anyone have any liaison reports? Alright, and we have one set of minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting of November eighteenth.
Do we approve the regularly scheduled meeting minutes of November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen?
Is there a second?
That'll be me, I'll second it.
Alrighty, very good. Um, any questions or concerns or corrections on those? Alright, all in favor of approving them as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining because I listen to.
Okay, very good. And that concludes our meeting for tonight. We are adjourned.